All residents of Newton, New Hampshire. At a public hearing for the purpose of gathering public input on the proposed 2019 town budget and warrant articles will be held on Monday, January 14th, 2019, at the Newton Town Hall, starting at 7:00 PM. Snow date is Tuesday, January 15th, 2019, at 7:00 PM. The public is encouraged to attend.
So, for our first warrant article, the town warrant will start with, the polls will be opening from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. To the inhabitants, you didn't read that right?
No.
Nope. To the inhabitants of the town of Newton in the county of Rockingham in said state qualified to vote in town affairs, you are hereby notified to meet for the first session of the annual meeting, which shall be for the explanation, discussion, and debate of each warrant article and the transaction of all business other than voting by official ballot, to be held at the Newton Town Hall on Saturday, February 2nd, 2019, at 9:00 AM. The second session to be held at the Newton Town Hall in said Newton on Tuesday, the 12th day of March, next, at 8:00 in the forenoon, to choose all necessary town officers for the ensuing year by official ballot, and to vote on all issues before the town of Newton on the official ballot. The polls to be open at 8:00 in the forenoon, and to close not earlier than 8:00 in the evening.
And there will be a nor'easter that day, because that's tradition. Tradition.
So, warrant article one, to elect all necessary town officers for the ensuing year. Notice there are no names yet, because nobody, filing has not opened yet, which will be later this month.
Warrant article two shall read, "Shall the town of Newton raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately, the amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant, or as amended by a vote of the first session, for the purposes set forth therein, totaling Should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be $3,341,534, which is the same as last year with certain adjustments required by provisions, by previous actions of the town of Newton, or by law. Or the governing body may hold one special meeting, in accordance with RSA 40:13, Room Number 10 and Room Number 16, to take up the issue of a revised operating budget only. The estimated budget increase from the 2018 actual budget to the 2019 proposed budget represents a tax impact of 14 cents per thousand of assessed value." And the board has not yet chosen to recommend or not recommend.
Selectmen is misspelled, by the way.
That 14 cents, you said?
It should be 0.014 per 1,000.
Oh, okay.
It's not 14 cents per 1,000, but it's 1.4 cents per 1,000. Big difference.
Little bit.
It's on the other sheet, it was just a typo on my part.
Did you fix the typo of the word selectmen, too?
No.
Oh, yes, I fixed that, yep.
Counting paper clips and...
So, it's 1.4 cents per 1,000?
Correct.
We're gonna vote on this.
Okay.
0.014.
Yeah, so it's 1.4 cents.
Okay. All in favor of this article?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
So, Article three. Article three warrant article, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,200 to be deposited into the engineering and renovation capital reserve fund created in 2015, said funds to come from the unassigned fund balance. This represents the rental fees received." And that's the rental fees from Merrimack Road?
Yes.
Okay. This article result in no increase in the amount to be raised by taxes.
Any questions? All in favor of Article three?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Sorry, that was my, I did say aye.
Okay, I didn't hear. Okay. Unanimous?
Warrant article number four, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate as proposed by the cemetery trustees the sum of $25,000 to pave the horseshoe driveway at the Highland Cemetery, and to authorize the withdrawal of $10,000 from the cemetery expendable trust fund created in 2016 for this purpose. The balance of $15,000 is to be raised from general taxation. This article would result in an estimated .03 cent increase per 1,000 dollars of assessed value to be raised by taxes."
I would just like to state that I seem to recall seeing something recently about how part of that had to be closed off due to ruts. The paving of this horseshoe will alleviate that issue.
Okay. All in favor of Article four?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous?
So, our next one, Article five. "To see if the town will vote, as proposed by the Board of Selectmen and the transfer station manager, to raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 to purchase a tractor and equipment for the purpose of the daily operations at the transfer station, with 50,000 to come from the transfer station recycling special revenue fund created in 2003 for this purpose. This article would result in no increase in the amount to be raised by taxes." Now, for those who do go to the transfer station, I'm sure you're aware, we have what we call the Kubota. It was not new when we got it, and it is a money pit.
It was a drug forfeiture acquired vehicle, I wanna say, 12 to 14 years ago.
And the transfer station has outgrown the Kubota. The Kubota's getting beat up pretty bad, trying to keep up with the amount of use that it's needed at the transfer station.
And the idea behind this is not to spend 50,000, but we've actually gone out and looked at some prices, and it's not impossible to hit that number. We're not gonna be looking for the one with all the bells and whistles, but we need something that will serve us, hopefully, for the next 20, 25 years.
Excuse me? Can you go up to the...
So, do, Jack, do you wanna talk to that? I just heard, I just heard the question, so...
And I was wondering what we use the tractor for down there. When we go down, I, they never help you or anything with the tractor. What is it used for?
Actually, quite a bit.
It's used for cleaning the snow, it's used for pushing the brush piles up, used for the compost piles.
I thought we had a bow loser down there.
What's that?
For the brush piles and stuff.
Yeah, it doesn't belong in the transfer station, but we do use it when the brush pile gets out of control, like the Kubota.
So, here's, here's the main thing for me, and Jack, you can back me up on this, I'm incorrect in my understanding, is when we send a trailer, is it a trailer? You call it something else. Dumpster. When you send a dumpster back, you wanna use, you get charged for that dumpster, no matter what's in there. You could have a few items in there, or you could fill it.
Or a tipping fee.
If we use a tractor, we can press it against there, we can get more in there, so the town will get, get, will get more bang for their buck, essentially.
Right. Somebody drops off a lodge couch, a lot of times they'll crush it with a tractor, then put it in to save room in the container.
So, they don't actually help you lift up the couch and put it in the compact, the thing?
Most certainly do.
Right. If you were asking...
I'd say they've been known to.
Yep.
There was never an incident where we got asked...
Do you need someone to speak at the microphone?
Yeah, Jack, you're to speak at the microphone.
I wish Pete was here. I thought, don't think he remembered about this meeting here, but he did a lot of work on, Jack Cozak, Newton. I work at the transfer station, for those of you who don't know me. Well, and Bob, and everybody is right there, you know, we pack those containers down. The Kubota we have right now, it's, you can't. You just, you can get it down a foot or so, so an awful lot of times we'll have the highway department come over, in especially when it's really bad. And there's a cost of the, that money is charged to the transfer station. Pete has all those numbers of what we spent with the highway department over the last three or four years, and I think they, he presented those, I think, to the selectmen back a few years ago. And plowing, keeping the place clear for when there's snow, that's the other big issue. But again, we have the compost pile, and that's what it's used for also. But the biggest thing is, and evidently you've never brought a couch down or anything, and asked for help, but we help people all the time, we have them, if we're too busy, we can't get it, we haven't put it on the ground, and we clean it up later on with the Kubota. So, it's, it's really used quite a bit.
Okay. Thanks, Jack. Anybody else?
And remember, I can't drive this point home enough, this article would result in no increase in the amount raised by taxes. So, we're basically, this is one of those banking articles, we're moving money from one account to another account, so...
Okay. All in favor of Article five?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous?
Is that me?
Sorry, no, it's me. "To see if the town will raise, to, will vote, as proposed by the Board of Selectmen, to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 for the purpose of holding a hazardous waste day, for Newton residents only, with $25,000 to come from the transfer station recycling special revenue fund created in 2003 for this purpose. This article would result in no increase in the amount to be raised by taxes. We try to have a hazardous waste day every other year, they have been very successful. Most people don't know how much the town pays to do this, but the money comes out of the fund, which is, the transfer station recycling special revenue fund is funded by the money when people bring bulk objects in, and you pay $10 to dispose of a chair, or what have you. That money goes, by previous decision of the town meeting, goes into the special fund, and is used to pay for the hazardous waste days, and other major things that come up at the dump. Remind people that what, we allow four other towns to also bring in bulk items, and they pay roughly twice what the Newton resident does. So, if Newton resident pays $10 to get rid of a chair, somebody from Kingston pays 20."
Okay, any questions? All in favor of Article six?
Aye.
Article seven, "To see if the town will vote to raise the appropriate sum of $32,189 for the following community services. Area home care and family services, $3,800. Child advocacy center, $2,000. Drugs are dangerous, $2,500. Family mediation, $5,947. Haven, $3,050. Lamphrey Health Care, $1,600. NHS PCA, $750. Rockingham County Community Action, $5,000. Rockingham Nutrition Meals on Wales, $2842. Vic Gary Center, $2,700. And Waypoint, also known as Child and Family Services, of $2,000, for a total of $32,189. This article would result in estimated 0.06 increase per 1,000 of assessed value to be raised by taxes." And all, this is all social service events that we vote on every year, and we know a lot of Newton residents use these services.
Anybody have any questions?
Jim Baker, Newton. I'm just curious, how the allocations for each service get determined?
They get determined by the agencies themselves, based on the actual usage and the predicted...
The service...
Yes.
I see. Thank you.
And I do wanna point out that if we did, if this were not to pass, then we would still have to pay for these services. It's just something else would have to be cut in order to do it. So, very important that we do it. We actually did it discounted by reaching this agreement.
Okay. All in favor of Article seven?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that an aye, Jim? I didn't hear.
No, that's an aye.
Okay. All right, unanimous?
And Article eight, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, as proposed by the Recreation Commission, the sum of $4,500 for recreational programs and trips for Newton senior citizens. This article would result in an estimated .01 cent increase per 1,000 dollars of assessed value to be raised by taxes." Obviously, this is a, have this every year, very successful program, and usually passes, I think, due to rising costs, where I think we upped it by $100 this year, or something like that.
It actually went down, when we first audited it, it was 5,000, and we dropped it.
Yep.
Okay, any questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Article eight. Okay, unanimous?
Article nine. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, as proposed by the Recreation Commission, the sum of $12,000 to recruit, train, and hire seasonal, part-time lifeguards to oversee the safety of all swimmers at the town beach. This is the, this article would result in an estimated 0.06 increase per 1,000 of assessed value to be raised by taxes."
Yeah, so, for those who may not know, last year, this, a slightly different wording on an article passed successfully. However, there's been a, basically, a, lifeguards are hard to come by in New England. Not just us, but several towns in the Merrimack Valley found it impossible to actually find certified lifeguards that we could even hire. So, what happened was that money went unspent last year, it's gonna fall to the general fund, right, is where it will go. So, it will, will go back to the town. However, we'd like to try this again, but you'll see it's to recruit, we'd like to recruit some high school students, send them to training with the Red Cross, and hopefully hire them as part-time lifeguards. So, to me, this is always one of those ultimate public opinion polls, put it out there on the warrant article, if people don't want it, they're gonna vote no. If they do want it, they're gonna vote yes. And then, now, we just have the ability with different wording to, to hopefully have better luck, and we'll get started as soon as the election's over.
Jim?
Article 10, "To see if the town..."
Oh, Jim.
Hold on.
Bad Jim, not you.
Sorry.
Jim Baker, Newton. I'm just wondering, it doesn't say certified lifeguards. Has the part-time lifeguards been vetted by your insurance company to see if there's any liability?
Oh, yes.
Okay. That's my only question.
Yeah, I mean, I'll tell you, we spent a lot of time with our insurance company last year, because in the end, the insurance company recommended us hiring them as part-time town employees, rather than, initially, we're going to sub it out to the YMCA or something like that. Our coverage is actually better doing it this way.
Thanks.
Yep.
Okay. All in favor of Article nine?
Aye.
Aye.
Article 10, "To see if the town of Newton will vote to dissolve the capital reserve fund established in 2005, known as the Safety Complex Building Fund. Said funds in the amount of $4,585.42 plus accumulated interest to date of withdrawal, shall lapse to the town general fund. This article would result in no increase in the amount of tax, the amount to be raised by taxes."
This is a bookkeeping measure. This fund will not be used anymore for the initial intent, so we just wanna close it out to make the money available again.
Okay. All in favor of Article 10?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous?
Article 11, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $4,585 to be deposited into the engineering and renovation of land and building at 8 Merrimack Road Capital Reserve Fund, created in 2015. This sum to come from the unassigned fund balance, no amount to be raised from taxation. If warrant article 10 does not pass, this article will be null and void. This article result in no increase in the amount to be raised by taxes."
So, as you can see, we're attempting to take the funds from the Safety Complex Building Fund, and put it into the Merrimack Road Capital Reserve Fund, or the, yes, and the engineering and renovation, yes, so all of that. It's really just moving the money from one fund to another, because we're not using the Safety Complex Fund anymore, but there is potential in the future for renovations, et cetera, so it's a better place for the money.
Actually, we cannot use the Safety Complex Building Funds, because that was specifically tied to a previous plan for a different fire station, and...
Which is why we wanna close it out, and put it into a fund where we can use it.
All in favor of Article 11?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
So, Article 12, "To see if the town will vote to dissolve the Capital Reserve Fund established in 1997, known as the Town Hall Sprinkler Capital Reserve Fund. Said funds in the amount of $1,541.91 plus accumulated interest to date of withdrawal, shall lapse to the town's general fund. This article would result in no increase in the amount to be raised by taxes."
Okay. All in favor of Article 12?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
And then, a related article, number 13, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,542 to be deposited into the Town Buildings Fund for the purpose of maintenance, repairs, and construction, created in 2006. This sum to come from unassigned fund balance, no amount to be raised from taxation. If warrant article 12 does not pass, this article will be null and void. Again, this is bookkeeping cleanup. The town has tried several times to get funding for the sprinklers in Town Hall, haven't been successful. So, we wanna move the funds from that, and put it into the more generic fund for maintenance, repairs, and construction on Town Hall buildings itself."
I just wanna make a clarification on that, when I was reviewing these articles. Yes, as Town Buildings Fund, I've added the word capital reserve in front of fund, so just...
Yep, Town Buildings Capital Reserve Fund.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor of Article 13?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
Article 14, "To see if the town will vote to dissolve the Capital Reserve Fund established in 2013, known as Emergency Operating Center for Emergency Operations Equipment, Office Supplies, and Payroll. Said funds in the amount of $1 shall lapse to the town's general fund. This article would result in no increase in the amount to be raised by taxes. This was an article that was put in in 2013, I believe it was originally intended to be funded with $15,000. From before, the amount was lowered to a dollar. It has never been used, and that poor dollar is sitting there in its own separate account, and we decide to, we'd like to move it in, and it can join its friends in the general fund."
Any other questions?
Nickel and diamond.
What about the interest on the...
It's a dollar one.
Give me at least 10 cents.
Actually, at a dollar, it is, that's one of the problems is, is...
There is no interest.
Trust days, I suspect this account is costing us, it's like $7.50 to maintain the account that has a dollar.
Like your bank account, if you go below a threshold, yeah.
Okay, all in favor of Article 14?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
Article 15, "To see if the town will vote, as proposed by the fire chief, to raise and appropriate the sum of 50,000 to be placed in the existing capital reserve fund, known as the Fire Apparatus and Equipment Refurbishment Fund, voted in 2011. This article would result in estimated 0.10 increase per 1,000 of assessed value to the ra, to be raised by taxes." But it's just the 50,000 that he uses to replace equipment every five, six, seven, eight years, depending on what's in there.
The last time we used it, it paid for what, half of the new fire truck?
Tanker, yeah.
All right, the tanker was paid, about half the funds came from NIST, so we don't have to foot the full bill on the new truck.
But now, we need to start replenishing that fund for...
Yeah, I think the balance, the balance is low on it.
Any questions?
Annie Collier, can you give a little history of what the balance is, what it grew to, what it's at now? How long it's been in effect?
Well, unfortunately, the chief got called on on a call. I don't know if any of us would have that information.
As I can bet you...
Yeah, forget what we used on a tanker. An email we got today, I don't know.
You sure?
Yeah, right.
I don't recall seeing it.
Fire apparatus right now currently has $2,589. Well, this is last year.
Yeah, it's kinda low.
About $3,000.
A little low.
A little low.
Right.
Which means we wouldn't buy much in the way of apparatus, so if any of our tankers or engines, or any other apparatus were to fail, we wouldn't have the funds to replace it.
We remind people, a couple of years ago, we depleted most of that fund to buy the new tanker. And we made a concerted effort that, yeah, after spending all that money for the new tanker, we would wait a couple of years before we started refunding money into the, into that account, and is now an appropriate time. It's, I mean, it's the biggest impact on the taxes this year, and that's 10 cents per 1,000.
Yeah, a lot of the fire trucks are aging, and they're gonna have to be replaced eventually, so hopefully this will take away half the burden again.
And it's a little less painful to do it in smaller increments than it would be to have a piece of equipment fail, and then have to come up with hundreds of thousands of dollars out of a budget that we wouldn't have.
I mean, we have Captain Zelinski here, he might have an idea for us on how much a tanker or a pumper would cost these days.
Yeah, I'd say...
We have four trucks now, currently over 20 years old, and most people don't have 20-year-old cars, and we're rolling to emergencies. In four or five years, maybe six, the chief would like to get rid of three of them and buy one fire truck. So, that's the emphasis on, there's three trucks that really need a lot of maintenance. I mean, they'll work, but, you know, he's gonna hang on them. But that's the big picture.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor of Article 15?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous?
If we're at the end of the warrant, I have a question to go back to at the very top.
Too late.
It says, it says, "To be held at the Newton Town Hall on Saturday, February, or, I'm sorry."
February 2nd.
All right, the second session, "To be held at the Newton Town Hall." The second session, I think our plan is to hold it at the fire and rescue station on that date.
The election?
I think so.
I think so.
I think you need to, I don't think that tax collect, the town clerk is...
Yeah, I think she, last I spoke to her, granted, I haven't talked to her in a little while about it, she was on board with it, so, the...
We'd need to put that on the, on the selectmen's agenda, so that we can discuss it and get specific input.
No, I'm sorry, the, March 12th.
The voting, not...
Yeah. So, I mean, that's why I'm bringing it up now, is it, my, my thinking was always, that was always kinda in the plan for the new fire station. I think the fire chief, I know he's not here, had carved out a lockable section there, so that the, the town clerk could lock some of her stuff that she needs there, and we'd, we'd obviously, as we'd have the handicap accessibility is covered there.
Except for the fact that she needs a hardwired...
She needs an HDMI cable or something, run from the mechanical room to where her, where that boot is gonna be.
Right, so that the handicap voting.
Yeah.
And we didn't, we weren't able to answer that question of whether or not the fire station has that, because the fire station is basically Wi-Fi, I believe.
So, we can check into our questions and answers, and we can discuss it on the next selectmen's meeting.
And here's my main thing with this, is we only have one election this year, and if, if our future plan is to have all of our elections at the fire station, I'd wanna kick it off... to kick it off with this one because sadly, lower voter turnout, and we can kind of work out the kinks on March twelfth. And then, in, I think it's in February, in February of two thousand twenty, when we have the, the next election, is going to be a huge turnout. I'll take that to the bank. We can be prepared for that. I wouldn't want the first time we use the fire station to be that one, you know?
I agree. However, since there was a concern that Mary Jo brought forward regarding the, the hardwiring of that piece of equipment, I don't have an answer for that tonight.
That's an Armon issue. They, they need to see where she's going to set that booth up and so they can run the wire. Armon would have to do it.
And to play devil's advocate here, at the selectman's meeting earlier today, there was concern raised about whether or not there would be sufficient parking for a ribbon-cutting ceremony.
Correct.
I would hazard that the same concerns should be raised about whether we'd have sufficient due to snow for election.
Yeah, I just asked the police chief. There's actually more, well, first of all, for an election, it's twelve hours. The ribbon-cutting would be a couple hours. There's actually more parking existing at the fire station than there is right here.
Absolutely.
I was just going to say that, that's a given.
And it's more safety not crossing one oh eight.
Well, that's why we have a crossing guard on one oh eight.
Wouldn't need one. You just told me they wouldn't have a crossing guard, so.
So your problem is you having your deliberative session on February second?
Yeah.
And then, if your next meeting is that Tuesday, I don't know, I don't know the timing.
So, I don't know if I have to make it a motion, but I'd put it this way. If, if the town clerk, when you ask her, says, "No, this is an absolute no-go, it can't be done," then, then I think, I think we're decided, we just won't do it. She's, she, and, and the moderator, right, they, they own the election. But if, if they say it can be done and we just have to, and there's just a couple of things we need to do to firm it up, then I think we can commit to it and then, at our February fifth meeting, we can start to iron out some of those things.
Don't remember, it's not just the town clerk, but we have the trustees of the checklist, the supervisors of the checklist have... No, remind me how many volumes you have.
Oh.
That, that would have to be...
About fifteen?
They, they have a large store of information that would also have to be transferred over to the fire station for that.
But only once, because we can lock it upstairs.
That has to come back because that's paperwork that they have to be able to work on and access.
I mean, that's not, that can be transported, that's not a big deal. My only, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with it. My only concern is with the last few elections during blizzards, the fire trucks be parked outside and getting covered with snow if we get a call, and they'd have to clean all the trucks off and...
Yeah, I mean...
That'd be my only concern.
Yeah, I know the chief's not here, but the chief has talked about it several times, so he didn't seem to be concerned about, you know, I'm, I'm not so sure he'd be emptying out all the bays, you know what I mean? There'd be, it's still enough.
He might be able to move more enough so that they're all inside too.
Or in the Butler Building.
Okay. On those books, I'm sorry, Barbara White, supervisor of the checklist, on those books, when we bring them over there, they need to come back here. And if we have another snowstorm, that could be a problem.
When do they have to come back?
They have to come back at night. They have to be locked back in the cabinet downstairs.
They have to be locked in that cabinet downstairs? Where does it say that? Is that like in the, is that a law or something?
They have to be locked up, they have to be under lock and key.
Which we could do over there. You're, you're talking about if there's a snowstorm and, and we have to lock them up, we could, we have places we can lock them over there, then get them back here after the storm's over.
Okay, so now what you're, okay, all right. So what you're talking about is that the deliberatives can be here, but the actual voting would be over there, at the firehouse, in the fire station. Okay. All right. And how, when will you make that decision so we know actually whether it's going to be at the firehouse or not?
February fifth meeting.
Mary Jo will talk to Diane tomorrow.
This warrant says where you're holding the meetings.
Correct.
It gets posted on January twenty-eighth, so you have to have an answer before I post this.
Yeah, absolutely. That's why I bring it up now.
It amended to the floor of the deliberative session.
Yep, yep.
No, I have to post this before the deliberative.
Right, but then it can be amended at the deliberative.
But it could be amended at the deliberative.
It's already posted.
Right.
Right, but a lot of stuff could be changed in the, you could change the entire warrant at the deliberative. It's posted one way.
Right, they can change ten thousand, two hundred to a dollar.
But I don't repost it, is what I'm saying.
You do after it's been changed at the deliberative. Right, the one, the one with the line-outs and stuff?
I don't import, I don't go posting it and put it on the website.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
I just, Annie Collier, I just want to make a request that you do the timing and coordinate with the school district because the warrants for the school district also say where voting is held for Newton. So, just would ask that, that be coordinated, please.
Yep, absolutely.
I saw on the town website a very well-written letter that went out in April to the, some state reps, or the state, I guess, about flexibility on snow days for elections. I was wondering if you ever got any response from them on that?
Nope.
Okay.
So I, I had informal conversations with, with them. The, the previous ones didn't have any luck with it, so I spoke to the new, as you know, our delegation is, is brand new now, and I said to them, I'm like, "You need to make that your number one priority because I would, if I was in Vegas, I'd put money on it, we're gonna, we're gonna get another storm," you know? And they just can't, they, our entire state legislature up there can't figure out how to work together on this. And I, I signed that letter, though you read. I would say it again, you've got three months to figure this out. And to me, we disenfranchised quite a few of our voters who, you know, came up to you guys, I think, at the Town Hall the day before, "What am I going to do? I can't get out," you know? And couldn't get an absentee, and, you know, we, we were the only thing open in Newton that day, you know? You couldn't get food. Those of us who were here were trying to find someplace to eat. We couldn't get food and school wasn't open, you know? And most people were home from work, so I'm off my soapbox now, but it's still, here we are, almost a year later. Two years after the first one, we're still talking about it.
I thought it was a great letter and a good effort.
We tried.
I was hopeful you'd gotten some response.
I've actually, I was at the State House and ran across Mr. Gardner, Secretary Gardner, and did the lobbying for, for the town explaining that I never want to go home again from a day of voting to snow that is higher than my waist and have to figure out how to get into my home. We are lucky, we have our, a town moderator that brings snowshoes now with him. Some, just some further information since we're at the end of, towards the end of the season, or towards the end of the meeting. Just so that people know, the operating budget represents an increase of seven thousand, nineteen dollars over last year. If anybody's sitting there wondering why we're talking about it's one point four cents, not fourteen, it's because the entire increase over last year is the sum total of seven thousand, eighteen, sorry, seven thousand, nineteen dollars and thirteen cents. I question whether or not we're turning into a regressive budget. The, if every warrant article were to pass, we would be looking at a twenty-three point four cent per thousand increase in the taxes. That is approximately a forty-six dollar increase.
Twenty-three point four?
On a three-hundred-thousand-dollar house. Sorry, sixty-nine.
Three-hundred thousand?
You've got your calculator open.
Yes, three-hundred thousand.
Yeah.
What's the percentage?
The increase is twenty-three point four cents.
That's, no, that's not bad.
Seventy dollars and twenty cents.
Yeah, that...
It represents a seventy dollar and twenty cent increase.
Seventy dollars and twenty cents on a three-hundred-thousand-dollar home.
Okay.
If everything.
I would, I would...
We do actually argue about paperclips and elastic bands.
But you're applauding, you should be applauding the department heads. We all should be applauding the department heads. We ask them every year to do more with less, so they're the ones that should get that.
I also want to say that while we say it's an increase in taxes for this, it's not the full seventy dollars per taxable because many of these have already passed in the past, so we're already seeing them in our tax group. I mean, the...
Correct. The, I, I'm guessing that half of that will disappear with the fact that it's duplication of last year's warrant articles to this year's warrant articles.
Exactly. So some of it is new, which will be additional, some of it is the same, which, if not passed, would decrease, but if passed, would keep it at the same funding level. I don't want to scare people with the seventy dollars.
Well, yeah, I know, but I, you know, full disclosure.
Okay. If nothing else, we're going to close the...
If the public has anything for us or...
Does the public have any other questions?
Comments in turn.
No, nothing to do with school.
Oh, no, 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 no.
No. We, we won't even go there.
We, we have no say in that department.
Yeah, some of us do. Okay, on that note, let's close the public hearing at seven forty-three PM.